Guys, we're gonna start if you're ready. Peter, you ready? Okay. Okay, this meeting from the Town of Dyton's Board of Election, Board of Selectment and Finance Committee Special Meeting. Today is Wednesday, March 13th at 5:30 PM, in person at Dyton Regional High School, 2700 Regional Road, North Dyton, Mass. 02764. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh, Peter's gonna open his meeting too, right?
Yeah, so we can do that.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are we gonna have a call to order, please?
Good evening. Leonard Hall is present.
Nicole Mello, present.
And Peter Karen, present.
I'd like to commend Roach if you want to open the FinCon meeting.
So we'll open the March 13th FinCon meeting. Present, Peter Roach.
Andrew Voight.
Ron McKay.
Bill Coolen.
Susan Nett, your guys.
Okay. I just want to mention that for the record, this meeting is being recorded. There is no public input at this meeting. This will be played on Channel 9, correct? Played on Channel 9 or at youtube.com/townofdyton. Mr. Rooney, do you want to start?
Thank you, Mr. Karen.
You're welcome.
So I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the Selectmen, thank the FinCon, and both Town Administrators, and Ms. Amal for having us here tonight. On behalf of the Districts, I'm joined by the Chair of the Board of the School Committee, Mr. Aaron Horst. Also, we have several Dyton School Committee members here. We have Mr. Futcher, Furtos, and Mr. Jefferson. And last but not least, we have our business administrative consultant from TMS Solutions, Mr. Brian Hyde. We do appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Usually, these are celebratory opportunities for me to come before the Selectmen. But I have to admit that tonight is going to have a little bit of a somber time. This is a troubling time financially for our district and across Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Before I start sharing the intricacies of budget process, I do have some venues. First of all, I'd like to thank the residents of our two fine towns, especially Town of Dyton. Your continued commitment to education is shaping the future, not only of our students, but also of our district. To our School Committee, especially our Budget Subcommittee, we are grateful for your guidance and understand the immense responsibility that you have to submit a reasonable budget. Our town leaders have been in conversations with me about this since the fall. The Selectmen, the Town Administrators, the Advisory Finance Committee, and others have taken a vested interest. Getting through this together sends a strong message to our students, our staff, and families. Speaking of Advisory Finance, I'd like to thank Suolrenz for taking the responsibility of being the Chair of Advisory Finance. To be honest, we kind of went into a little blind because there weren't really any historical context that we were able to be given from Advisory Finance. But through Budget Subcommittee and through advice from TMS Solutions, I think we ended up landing a pretty good synergistic relationship between Advisory Finance and the District. Our union leaders have also been a valuable part of this process as we navigate what is a grant of our business. Our staff members deserve a tremendous amount of credit as well. Being in education today is difficult, and no matter what the role is in the school district, we appreciate our staff members for igniting the fire of learning as we shape the future of our students and our district. And last but not least, I'd like to thank my district leadership team, Central Office and building leaders. We truly have an outstanding group of administrators that will lead our district at this time. As I said at the outset, this is a somber time for us. I do not relish having to present this information to you. Staff and resources are being decimated in school districts. ...the Governor's Budget, which is currently an abomination. This process has been both inclusive and transparent. Sadly, in the Central Office, we've not focused on much of anything since December because we've had so much work to do to be able to get to a reasonable budget proposal to our School Committee. I am very grateful to the constituencies that are listed here. And once again, I'll thank the Advisory Finance Committee for helping us find our way as we have reinstated that group. As you will see here, our increase is in line with prior years. The dramatic difference from the past two years is the decreased revenue that we are working with this year. Last night, we had our budget hearing. I want to thank Selectmen Hall for being there. I think some of you were also in the audience. I have a bit of good news. The presentation that I made to the community and to the School Committee last night was a budget of 4.24%. But hot off the presses, the School Committee last night had the wisdom to contract with the South Coast Educational Collaborative on two lease agreements that are worth $200,000 in tuition waivers. So with the proportionate benefits to each town, I am very proud to say that as of this moment, we are now below 4%. We are at 3.84%. And the Town of Dyton's assessment went down roughly $90,000. In building our budget, as is the case with most districts, we start from a place of providing level services. Everyone should probably be aware that level does not necessarily mean equal. Contractual raises, annual price increases, and inflation are all factors. When we took FY24's $49.9 million budget and put in all of the factors to get us to level services, it was an increase of an astronomical 16.6%. And we know that this type of increase was not going to be palatable to either of our towns nor to our School Committee. And so we immediately went to work. As you will see in this chart, we employed various strategies to land where we are today. Just a couple of examples. We went back to certain spending lines in the buildings and went to FY23 actuals. What I mean by that is this district kind of had a little bit of a lazy approach to funding some of their building lines. So for example, postage might be listed as $2,500 year after year after year. And we have surely moved away from postage with digital report cards, online newsletters, the use of social media. And so we went back and we found that in some schools, instead of spending $2,500 on postage, we were spending less than $1,000. And so Mr. Hyde and I went through with our budget managers, who are primarily our principals in our buildings, and we cut back to the last tangible numbers that we had, which were the FY23 actuals. That helped us significantly. We also went to work on refining some contracts. We had some pretty high number, high-dollar contracts with some of our technology members. We ended up hiring a new Director of Instructional Technology back in January. And he came in with a wealth of experience and had a lot of recommendations as to how we could sharpen our pencil, if you will. And we were able to cut quite a bit out of the budget with his influence. And then also, we went through the traditional rightsizing and RIF discussions. A few weeks ago, I presented a budget to the School Committee, the preliminary budget, at 4.23%. And then again, as I said, as of today, we are at 3.84%. There are some variable factors, including an unexpected increase in insurance premiums. We originally thought that we were safe, approximating an increase of 6.5%. But unfortunately, we underestimated it. And just after the preliminary presentation, we were informed by the insurance company that our increase was going to be 7.95%, which translates to $155,000. There has been talk in the community that the District needs to do its part. And I've listed a couple of bullets here. First of all, we have already stripped $1.1 million out of the budget in terms of security and technology contracts. We are also pursuing an expensive phone system upgrade that is required for safety purposes. We're gonna do that through the Town Mortgage process. And the School Committee is to be commended for leaving no stone unturned as alternate sources of revenue are being pursued. In evidence, last night's listeners to the South Coast Educational Collaborative. But last but not least, we have had to right-size nearly $1.5 million in salary and benefits by cutting 21 positions. I would say that we've done our part. Yesterday evening, we provided an assessment worksheet. And I know that this is very small print. And this is now out of date considering that the School Committee's decision last night to break in $200,000 from the lease agreements. I am not immune to the fact that these assessments are still very high. But we have a responsibility, myself, my team, and the School Committee, to build a budget that is fiscally responsible from our perspective. At the beginning, I mentioned that there are three significant factors that we're dealing with this year, and any one of which, in isolation, could hamper us. But in tandem, they are crippled. They have the impact of sledgehammer, to be quite frank. However, we're going to get through this together. So instead of hammers, we're going to try to do them simply as hammers. The first factor is the one that is absolutely unconscionable to me. The Governor's Budget is giving us $140,000 less in transportation. Transportation reimbursements for regional school districts was supposed to be an incentive for districts to regionalize. Transportation costs are skyrocketing. And for us to be given $140,000 less than what we were given last year, to me is very tone deaf on behalf of the Governor's Administration. We only received $70,000 more in Chapter 78, which was the minimum $30 per child that the state could provide to us. And so therefore, we are starting $70,000 in the hole from just state revenues last year. I'm gonna get a little closer to my slide here. So on this slide, you'll notice that these are statewide funding revenues. In 2024, the state transportation was $88 million. The Chapter 70 was $872 million. This year, the Governor's proposal is decreasing transportation by 10%. It's down about $9.3 billion. And Chapter 70 is up only 2.19%. And we've all heard the dreaded I-word, inflation. Just some round numbers here. 9% inflation in 2022. 4% inflation in 2023. And projections for 2024 at a minimum of 3%. Yet Chapter 70 goes up 2.19% statewide. DR's Chapter 70 went up by one-half of 1%. Even though our enrollment went up. Now, not a significant increase in enrollment, but still, it is baffling to me how we can have more students in the District and the state is giving us less money. I'm still waiting for somebody to explain that to me. This has to promote a call to action. The second hurdle is our special education costs. And while this money is well-spent on the town's children with special needs, we cannot hide from the fact that the two-year increase in special education cost is up nearly 20%. Our projected special education budget is $4 million higher than FY24. This accounts for 26.4% of the entire FY25 budget in our District. To give you some context on transportation, I asked you to look at these transportation figures. The number of general education students far outnumbers the number of special education students. But the exorbitant transportation cost for both is almost equal. And again, if you put gas in your car recently, you know that transportation costs are going up. Our transportation contracts are going up. And yet, the state has seen their way to give us $140,000 less in transportation. The third factor is the exploration of the ESAR funds. ESAR funds, more commonly known around some school districts, as COVID money. The past two budgets that we have had really have been largely artificial. Because as you see in the green row, we've had as much as an additional 2.5% of funding from ESAR. Those ESAR grants are expiring very soon. The positions that we funded with ESAR make up $0.5 million in salary and benefits. These positions either have to be cut or they have to be traded for something else in the existing budget. ESAR grants were very limited in their scope. We spent funds on eight positions. And we've decided to only keep two of those positions for next year. Last year, I inherited a district that was overstaffed. There was no annual exercise of matching staff to current enrollment. And this makes me the bad guy in terms of reducing class sizes that were very low in many cases. Because you'll see here, salaries make up 54% of our budget. So it stands to reason that anytime we make a cut, over 50% of that cut needs to come from salaries and benefits. In the time that I've been here, the School Committee has charged me with running our district effectively and efficiently. And to that end, I have an obligation to be sure that staffing meets student needs. Therefore, we were able to find some efficiencies this year. However, I think it is important for me to note that we have gone through this exercise now two years in a row. And we are starting to get perilously close to class sizes and caseloads that I am not comfortable with. I am hoping that there will be an opportunity for our state legislators to make a difference. This is a chart of reductions per building or per department. As you will see, there are cases where we have retirements that we chose not to backfill. I've broken it down for you, building by building. In the teachers' union, there were 16 positions that were cut from the current budget. And two positions were added back from the ESAR budget. Those were in the teacher contract. So the total number of teaching positions that we're cutting is 14. Fortunately, four of those are retirements. So we are mitigating at least the impact on people and their families. Paraprofessionals, we cut two positions from ESAR, but we are adding two positions based on some student needs. So the net for the paraprofessionals is zero. We're cutting one central office secretarial position. That was in ESAR. And then we are also cutting two custodial positions, a half at each of our elementary and middle school buildings. And then, as far as contracted service employees, we cut 3.5 positions. To give you the context of the cuts being proportional, here are the number of cuts based on employees of our category. As you'll see, we're cutting about 5% of our teachers' union staff. We're cutting over 8% of our custodial staff, 5% of secretary, and 5% of our contractual staff. Again, it's 20.5 positions, which again is devastating for us. In terms of impacts, I am very fortunate that the School Committee placed tremendous trust in me and in my staff, especially my principals, in terms of being able to mitigate these impacts. And again, to be clear, there were some efficiencies based on low class sizes that we started to chip away at last year and then we continued through this year. But as you'll see, we cut the central office registrar position. We will have to restructure responsibilities in consultation with the Secretarial Union. Same thing goes with the cuts in the Custodial Union. Our cuts at Dyton Elementary School mean that class sizes will go from an average of 18 to an average of 20. At Dyton Middle School, cuts in the Unified Arts Department will mean that those class sizes go from an average of 14 to 19. And then at our high school, we are cutting three general education positions, one in social studies, one in science, one in math. And we're also cutting the high school librarian position. The impact of those varies. The high school is currently going through their course selection process. But again, the trust we place in the high school principal and her department heads, I have a high level of confidence that we will still have manageable class sizes in those departments after the right sizing. At this time, I can live with the impacts. I would like lower class sizes. But I believe that we're still in a place where learning can thrive. In closing, I'd like to say that I completely understand the impact that the increase has on your capacity as a town. But we have cut and cut and cut. Last year, it was middle school music and it was middle school Spanish. This year, it's other unified arts. Last night at the budget hearing, it was heart-wrenching to listen to students talk about losing mentors, losing electors. The financial crisis is now turning us against one another in the District. We worked so hard to reinvigorate this District culture. And last night, when I said it was crippling, it was not an exaggeration. We now have to navigate the understandable infighting that is taking place. Teachers want administrators cut. How come we're not cutting paraprofessionals? The teacher next door has a projection screen. How come I'm not getting one? The union president suggested that we cut an assistant principal at the high school. Our high school is one of the significant reasons why we are in financial trouble. Trying to rebuild this high school is going to require as robust of a team as possible. It's like turning a battleship. But we have the right team to be able to do that. In addition to losing students at the high school, it's costing the towns twice because we're not getting the Chapter 70 reimbursement and you're having to pay out of District tuitions for them to go to our regional, locational, technical competitors. Competitors, I might add, that are not suffering from any of these crippling financial conditions. So more than ever, we need a robust high school staff. And I stand by the fact that I would rather decrease a few classes from 15 to 18 students to 20 to 22 students, rather than having one assistant principal at the high school trying to be responsible for the discipline and the operations of the school. And here's the most compelling fact about the notion of cutting an assistant principal. Almost every teacher in this District makes more money per day than an assistant principal does. Our assistant principals, most of them make less than $100,000. Many of our teachers are in the $80,000 to $90,000 to $100,000 raise range. They earn that money. They work very hard for it. But to give you the context of the comparison of an assistant principal versus a teacher, it's negligible financially, but it is grandiose in terms of the responsibilities and the culture of the building. I want to thank Mr. Hall for his presence at the hearing last night. And he spoke passionately about a call to action. I shared with the Selectmen and with the Town Administrator a statement today from the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. At least they are behind us from the standpoint of trying to get our legislators to understand that this is a critical issue. As districts go, we are in purgatory. Our Chair of the Department said last night, "We're not considered rural and we're not qualified for Student Opportunity Act funding." Our legislators need to hear us. On Monday, our principals and our assistant superintendent had to call in human beings that are vital to our schools and tell them that their life as they know it in DR expires in 99 days. And others who have taught in buildings for 10, 15, 20 years are being forced to buck someone in another position at another school. Several people spoke in the hearing last night about fundraising. I was very impressed to hear about the library project. I'm a huge proponent of fundraising. However, we are operating with a threadbare staff as it is. We do not have a bandwidth to run major fundraising at this time. And not to be flippant, we're not getting it done with bake sales and car washes. The School Committee charges me with an immense responsibility to create a District environment that is both efficient and effective. Having substantial cuts two years in a row, we are getting perilously close to not being effective. I do believe that there is hope. I believe this District is on the cusp of a renaissance. The towns are collaborating. When I had to share the devastating news about how high the assessments were, Rehoboth asked for Dyton to be on the call so that we could all talk together. That right there is a huge step in terms of the renaissance of this District. The School Committee has a unified focus. When I was applying for this job, I had people telling me, "Oh my goodness, that School Committee, man, they hate each other there." This School Committee supports what we do. They always agree with one another. But they have a unified focus in terms of improving our District. And I'm proud to work for them. Our District Leadership Team is as good as any that I've ever worked on. And I've been in administration for 25 years. We just need a little help to get past this crisis. I do not envy you. I know that your talent is taxed. But our kids deserve it. So thank you.
Wait, if you want to start.
Mr. Rooney, thank you for your kind words. Thank you for your passion and your commitment to your teachers and your students. This is a twofold problem. And one of the problems, you spoke eloquently about the lack of support from the state. And as I said last night, and I'm going to do it at this time, I will be making a motion to ask the Board of Selectmen to write that letter, which I will now explain. The Governor's Budget is not the end... The governor's budget is not the end of the process. We have a very powerful supporter who represents our district. Her name is Patrick Patricia Hadad. She is the vice chair of the House Ways and Means Committee. And I would strongly urge the members of the Board of Selectmen, as well as members of the school committee, to reach out to her, to ask during their House budget negotiations that she advocate for additional funding for chapter seventy. Currently, the governor's budget has a meager increase of thirty-five dollars per student for chapter seventy funding. The Massachusetts Municipal Association, which the members of the Board of Selectmen belong, as well as Mr. Mullin, are recommending an increase of a hundred dollars per student be added to the budget as the House negotiates a final budget with the Senate. And that's where the House Ways and Means Committee plays a huge role in the negotiations between the House and the Senate. With that being said, I would like at this time to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen, through Town Administrator Mullin, send a letter to the Massachusetts House Ways and Means Committee and to the Governor's Office, one denouncing the thirty-five dollar per student increase and asking that the House Ways and Means and the Senate and House support the MMA proposal for a hundred dollar per student increase to chapter seventy funding.
My second thought.
There's a second on the floor. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
The second part has to do with something that I experienced seven years in a row as an educator during the days of Prop Two and a Half. And I know you're under a contractual obligation to send out those letters, but I'm hoping your union and your school committee will also take action to help what we're doing here this evening, to reach out to the legislature so that those colleagues can come back to DR as I did. You know, one of the things that's frustrating, and when I was an educator, it was April fifteenth, the letters went out. By sending out letters this early, you run the risk of good people leaving, and that's something I'm hoping with additional funding can be avoided. But I also have a concern. Dyson has a older population, and with that, a lot of people on fixed incomes. And we have an obligation to the taxpayers, as well as the students and staff. With that being said, and strongly supporting education, which although it may not appear by my advocacy for the taxpayers, you have made, correct me if I'm wrong, about one point four million in budget cuts?
Over two million in cuts. The salaries and benefits are across multiple quarters.
Should those two point five million in cuts be returned to you by an increase of state aid? Would the school district agree to return any surplus above that back to the towns so that they can adequately meet their needs? That is something I would ask the school committee to think about. Because here's the problem I have, and this is not something that just came about a couple weeks ago. Mr. Mullin presented in January, I believe it was, potential cuts because he had warned us that we were in tight fiscal times. One of the numbers that scared me was a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in public safety cuts, which would impact our seniors and the public well-being of all citizens in the town of Dyson. A month ago, Mr. Mullin said that the budget presented by the school committee and what the town of Dyson felt they could afford was different by eight hundred thousand dollars. A month ago, I asked the school committee to sharpen its pencil. Mr. Mullin sharpened his, and he was able to make three hundred thousand additional dollars in cuts on the town's side, yet no additional cuts were made on the school's side. I heard last evening the head of the teachers' union talk about the assistant principal, but I also am aware that two additional administrative positions were added to the high school this year, as well as a sports program. And I don't say that lightly, and I'm not strongly advocating that, believe me, but tough times force us to make tough decisions. What I'm asking again, as I asked once before, before the budget is finalized, is that we see how we can sit down, we, and maybe that deficit of now has been reduced to four hundred and ten thousand based on, from what I heard last night, the South Coast Collaborative did, that we could work to reduce that deficit even more. We understand the pain that the school district is facing, but we too, on the town's side, are facing pain. And as I said, in January, there is a need for all departments, all of us, to share that pain. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Like, I just want to clarify, like, I just want to try to clarify, like, a few things, because we do have a lot of information about, like, figures and numbers out there right now, and, oh, you know, like, I really want to begin by thanking Superintendent Rooney. The last, like, like, over the last year and a half, we, like, like, we have worked together, we, uh, 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 like, uh, like, at least once a week, we're talking either, uh, like, uh, like, either in a meeting, uh, uh, or on the phone about the fiscal challenges, uh, uh, like, about the fiscal challenges that are facing both the town and the district. And, I mean, like, I, oh, yeah, like, I think all along the information that Superintendent, uh, like, in his administrative team and the school committee has been sharing, so the town, so the town and the school district continue to operate based on having all the same information at the same time has been very helpful, and I just want to thank you, Bill. Just in terms of what, just in terms of how we have been planning for FY, for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, like, we began planning for FY twenty-five in August, like, of twenty twenty-three. At the time when we began planning in August, we, based on the information that we had at the time, based on the information we had at the time from BP, uh, early, in August of twenty twenty-three, we expected, based on the information we had available for the debt assessment, for the capital debt assessment, for, for the BP, for the P, excuse me, for the BP's school building project to, to begin really ramping up, like, in FY twenty-five. And that is why, like, at the end of August, in the end of August and September, we began, um, uh, like, uh, like, actually assessing, um, uh, essentially our ability, like, our ability to really absorb the additional for, uh, 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 like, four hundred thousand dollars, like, in capital assessments, that at time would be assessed, um, that would be assessed to the town, like, in FY twenty-five. Uh, like, I believe, uh, like, I believe, like, in mid-October, we heard from BP that the debt schedule had been adjusted, uh, in the timeline, uh, in the timeline for BP, um, the timeline for the entire BP debt assessment to really ramp up would begin actually, like, in FY twenty-five rather than FY twenty-six, so that did, so that what, so what that essentially did is give it us a little bit of more breathing room to be able to, uh, to be able to plan forward accordingly. So, like, with that all said, we continue planning it for, like, FY twenty-five based on what we anticipated of, but, based on what we, based on what we anticipated to be, uh, like, our available increases in revenue. And, uh, 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 as we've seen, as we have seen over the last few years, our increases in revenue have actually been negligible. Uh, like, in, uh, 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 in planning for FY twenty-five, the only revenues, the only revenues that we have been actually really able to guarantee will increase would be our Prop Two and a Half revenues, uh, like, and, uh, like, and also about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in new growth, which net out, uh, which net out really to be an increase of about seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, like, all of that, of that seven, of that seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars based on what the DR assessment increases have come in over the last few years, we had been projecting, uh, uh, we had, uh, we had been projecting an assessment increase, uh, uh, like, of about four hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred dollars. And so that is, that at the time, uh, that at the time had been how we had been planning and projecting, uh, like, in act, uh, like, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, like, in actually really from the beginning, trying to, trying to guarantee that, of that, of those seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars, like, in new revenues that we, right off the top, based on our commitment to education, um, based right off the top, we would dedicate, uh, like, or had an ability as a town to dedicate about seventy percent of those revenues to a DR increase. Uh, like, as the superintendent mentioned, that all changed when, uh, like, when we heard about the chapter of our seventy revenues, and, uh, like, in what, uh, what actually we heard and learned at the end of last month, that, uh, rather than approximately half a million dollar assessment increase, we, um, uh, 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 based, uh, based on all the reasons the superintendent outlined, oh, yeah, like, we had to anticipate, uh, we had to anticipate, uh, what until tonight had been, had been an assessment increase of one point three million dollars, and now it's down to about one point two. So, based on, uh, based on our available, uh, based on, uh, based on our available revenues, you know, that actually has created a delta in our ability to fund our DR school assessment of about now seven hundred and, actually, seven, about seven hundred thousand dollars. Uh, 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 what we, what we have worked, the town accountant and I have tried to do over the last two weeks is to go back, uh, like, to go back and look at revenues. Um, oh, yeah, like, I mean, like, and again, we're really tapped, in my opinion, to the wall in terms of what, how, uh, uh, like, in terms of how, how high we are projecting some of our revenue, how high we're projecting some of our revenues. However, we did act, uh, like, we have, uh, like, we found, we have, we have found to have an ability, uh, to actually try to increase our building permit revenues by thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, uh, like, uh, also in our auto excise, we have, like, in looking at our trends in prior years, we, uh, uh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, we have determined that we have an ability to raise that revenue by almost a hundred thousand dollars going in, um, almost a hundred thousand dollars going into FY twenty-five, that, uh, like, is about, like, fifty thousand dollars more than we initially anticipated. Uh, like, and then, uh, 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 what we had walked back from a few years ago, based, uh, like, on the fact that we were over projecting our ambulance fund line, um, uh, 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 we also determined that we have an ability right now to increase our reliance on the ambulance, uh, to increase our reliance on the ambulance fund by about, uh, by about seventy-five thousand. So, that has actually, like, we haven't actually, like, identified any cuts yet, but, like, I want to be clear, like, the delta, uh, the delta that, uh, the delta that we've already began to try to close has been based on, like, adjustments in revenues. And, uh, uh, and thankfully, we have had an ability to do that, but, like, even with the updates, however, even with the updates tonight, uh, like, uh, like, uh, like, even with the updates, even with the updates out tonight, like, I'm projecting that we still have an operational deficit going in to, uh, FY twenty-five that we need to close to have a balanced budget to the tune, like, of approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now. And still, I kind of wanted to, like, lay that out, you know, that, uh, like, so everyone had information about kind of where we begin, like, in this process as well last August, and where we are now today, uh, like, in the work we do have really, in my opinion, cut out for us, uh, like, uh, like, in the next eight weeks or so. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, um, yeah, that's where we are, like, on the town, uh, oh, yeah, like, on the town side in trying to absorb and, uh, share, oh, yeah, like, in sharing the challenge that both the district and the town have in this.
Right, thank you, Mike.
Mr. Rooney, thank you very much for your passionate speech. Uh, it was well presented, and I understand, and I think everyone, everyone up here understands what you're up against. We both share the same problem, a lack of revenue and expense. I, I, you have an unbelievable job trying to cut expenses as well as maintaining a environment that you can keep students, let them learn at the appropriate rate that they should be learning at here, an additional problem of trying to have extra enrollment coming from, keeping the kids here, and we appreciate that. Like I said, we both share the same problem. One of the things I want to ask is, have you maxed out on your income from chapter seventy as far as you're concerned, or do you think the state is going to come back with more funds?
I mean, I, I would venture to say that because this is a statewide problem, I think, um, you know, as Selectmen Hall mentioned, House Ways and Means Committee has, they have a lot of stroke, um, I, I, I think that we're going to see an increase.
Okay.
I, I don't, but I, I don't have a personal.
Something is better than nothing, absolutely. Uh, one of our biggest concerns is our cuts have, are going to have an impact on the town. Like I said, our, our revenue is, is fixed, and unless somebody else can cut their budgets, we have to make a balanced budget, as you as well. I'm not questioning the adjustment on that, I don't know it back and forth like you do, but I do know our budget back and forth. We live and breathe it every day, and it's not, they goes by that we're not talking about how to, how to close our deficit. With that said, you're one of the bigger... With that said, you're one of the bigger expenses for our town, uh, actually, the largest expense for our town, and we have to look to you as well as some of our larger departments, what you can give us back at this stage. I'm sure you've done as much planning as you can, but what we're asking is, is there just a little bit more that you can give us? One of the things you mentioned is class size. Not going back to when I was in school, but eighteen doesn't sound too, too high given us. I, I'm not sure what your teachers say, you still, but is there a possibility that you could look at that class size and say, for one year, we have to do more than what we're doing? Again, that's, I don't know your budget, but we were hoping that maybe that's an area you could look at and possibly cut. It's not something that we're asking for commercially, but certainly this year where we can, you can help us make our, our, our numbers meet.
Mr. Rooney, I understand where you're from, my only fear is, is that this isn't going to be a one-year thing, um, and I'm, I'm afraid that if, again, you know, not only twenty-one cuts resulting in over one-point-five million salary benefits, but also we stripped one-point-one million out of technology resources, security upgrades, pencils, you know, post-it notes, um, we were not lazy, and I'm not saying anybody's accusing us of being lazy in our budget, but, you know, um, I, I think sometimes it's just easy to get lazy in terms of budgeting, and we understood the significance, um, and so therefore, you know, to keep using the term sharp and a pencil, we're, we're down to the racer.
Yes, uh, like us.
But, but what I will say is that, you know, I heard our community last night, I, I heard our school committee last night, I've already had a couple of school committee members reach out about some individual meetings. We, by all means, between now and March twenty-sixth, when the school committee will ultimately make the decision on what is their budget, um, we'll, we'll, by all means, try to find any, if, any efficiencies that we can. I just, I, I am getting, I, I also have a responsibility to our families in terms of providing, um, a quality learning environment for our kids. Um, and we are getting empirically close to class sizes that start to concern me. And we do have contractual limits.
Sure, absolutely, and we have to live by those, just, this, the way we live by our, our agreements as well. Um, what about administrative, is there any room there?
I mean, um...
The administrative budget has seemed to have increased, not this year, uh, more rapidly than the room has demonstrated.
There, there, as already noted, there were two new positions, thank you. Um, as already noted, there were two new positions that were, um, created at Central Office. Um, one of them is a treasurer and grade writer position, uh, the other is a human resources manager. Um, human resources manager, we were, uh, we were contracting services that were costing more than what it would cost to have an FTE with salary and benefits. The school committee had the wisdom to bring that position on as an FTE. Um, and then the new position was treasurer and grade writer. I'm, I, I was asked by the school committee last night to, um, get back to them with an assessment of the value of those positions, so that is something that in my discussions with the school committee, we certainly, we'll certainly look at, but, um, and again, having a little bit helps, but not gonna, not gonna move the needle from that.
No, I understand that, uh, it's just, we, we can't move one needle either. And, um, like I said, being the largest of our expenses, it's a area that we as a town have to look at. Uh, like Mr. Huff said, unfortunately, we're not a cash-rich town, uh, we have, uh, senior citizens who live on a fixed income, who have no choice but to either cut their food budget, uh, because they can't, like, the taxes, or whatever lack of entertainment they might do, uh, not, uh, whatever the entertainment might come from, but they don't have a lot of room to cut their budgets either. And, uh, so all just seem to be in the same hole with no obvious way to get out of it.
It, it is a credit to, to all of your leadership that you have a town where people don't want to go, so, you know, I, I commend you for that, but they're absolutely right. We are, uh, we're all feeling this, uh, this crisis.
Yeah, sure.
As well, the position of treasurer and grade writer, each other combined, how much?
Uh, about two-hundred thousand.
Two-hundred thousand. And the assistant principal of the high school?
Ninety-five.
And, um, you proposed a hiring of a certified athletic director last year at a hundred thousand dollars. How much of an increase is that? In what, should I say, is it an increase from what you're making for?
About fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand. Thank you.
Mr. Jefferson, we'll get to you in a minute, okay? Uh, we want to go through the finances, and you can, uh, take questions. Thank you.
Mr. Rooney made a comment earlier, um, regarding, getting close to the point of not being effective anymore. Could you just elaborate maybe further some of that, because I know it's running.
Um, there are, there are some people who believe that the smaller the class size, the better the instruction is, and I don't, I don't subscribe to that, and I, I think there...
Uh, do you use the microphone?
The microphone's not working right now.
The microphone's on, thank you.
Um, do you want me to speak somewhere else?
Um, maybe in the center.
Okay.
Sorry.
Uh, it's okay. Um, I don't subscribe to the fact that, you know, for every child to take away, the instruction gets that much better. Um, obviously, a, a teacher wants to try to provide as much individual attention over the course of class period, um, but the contractual obligations that we have are, those numbers are there for, I think it's not just an arbitrary number that a teacher doesn't want to have more than twenty-six in their class. Um, and, you know, we are, in some cases, at the high school, probably, going to be getting, you know, closer to those mid-twenties. Um, and at the elementary level, there is research that shows that the smaller the class sizes, the better. Again, we don't need classes of ten or twelve, uh, I, I think we can get by with twenty, but we're, we're, we're at that point.
Mr. Rooney, one of, one of the questions I always have is, uh, looking at the person with the cost, and with the high school being a combination of high school funding and administration makes a good point. What is, out of, out of the money that's allocated into the high school line, what is the breakout between high school and administration? What is the breakout of admin versus high school costs on the, on the high school line?
Admin versus high school costs?
Yes. Okay. And you, you had mentioned, uh, just mentioned about going up against up to the twenty-six, and I know what we're going to see, uh, we will get where class sizes used to be versus where class sizes are now, a freshman class of a hundred and thirty students. Uh, looking at next year's, looking at the eighth grade class, but this year, at a hundred and ninety-seven in total, I could imagine that next year's not going to be a similar number during the high school, in that, you know, if overall, we're going to be looking at a high school of close to six-hundred students versus the days when there used to be nine-hundred students.
It's back to twenty-seventeen year around a thousand.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah. So, I guess one of two things that there, we've got more comments just from natural regression, or, I mean, the other issue is that that hits us on the back end as well, because these students are going somewhere.
Right, and, you know, from twenty-seventeen to twenty-twenty-two, when the enrollment at the high schools started dropping, there should have been compensatory staff modifications. That's been happening, uh, I arrived over two thousand twenty-two, school committee, that was one of the charges that the school committee gave me, um, we started that process last year, we took, uh, took that process this year.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that? There's a website through the state that shows, um, teachers, but number of students can be by year in the twelfth, because from your slide, you guys are at two-sixty-three now?
In terms of, in terms of teachers unit members?
Yeah, it is, uh, yeah, so that's basically the t, the number of teachers.
I got that from a very...
Okay. You said bright sizing started last year, do you remember how many cuts we got last year?
Uh, seventy.
Okay, so roughly would have been two-seventy last year, or probably about a s, similar number than a couple of years before then? Okay, yeah, the state has two-eighteen, two-fifteen, thirteen, so, yeah.
The only thing that I can say is, you know, teachers unit members include nurses, they include occupational therapists, speech therapists, I don't know that number that you saw, I just, like, purely classroom teachers, but, but, but I trust our payroll department.
With the lease, my final question for you, with the lease, are we, where we've got a special education company here now, does that save us anything in transportation or any other costs besides the two-hundred thousand revenue?
It will, um, it, it, the students that live in either of our towns that are placed in, and out of district placements with the South Coast Collaborative, uh, they'll still have to be transported from their residence to either the high school or to Beckwood, um, but that, we don't have, I don't have, uh, it's not more than a half dozen students. So, um, you know, I, I don't know what the realization of transportation safety is going to be, but it is a savings.
It's not necessarily significant.
I don't think it's going to add up to saving the teacher's job.
If I can, fine, one more question. What is Unified Arts?
Unified Arts, uh, so, we have the core classes, you know, of math, science, English, reading, writing, written type, type thing, uh, but then you've got, um, you've got music, you've got art, you've got phys ed, you've got library science, you've got STEM, you've got computer essentials, those are the classes that, um, the kids cycle through to not only give them a, a more robust experience, but also give the teachers an opportunity to have their career areas or their company time.
So you'd mentioned in the slide that Unified Arts class sizes is, do you have the DMS class size, normal regular, the math, English, what those class sizes are?
Uh, I can get that if you were asked, um, I don't have it.
Okay.
Probably looking at the twenties.
So if I may, through the chair, um, to answer your question, high school is roughly just on a fifteen million dollars, Central Office is just about ten million. Central Office does consist of pre-K to twelve services, uh, a technology department, our facilities department, uh, the business office, the tennis office, all employee benefits pre-K to twelve, all retirement benefits pre-K to twelve, and insurances, um, such as, um, workers' comp, but, uh, we have pretty great college numbers now for you. We do it in a, a sorbile format if you'd like, and if you can true access to every line, we'll be there.
Thank you.
I haven't heard it mentioned this evening, but I think it's important to know what the school committee did to, and, and especially FinCon. I, is, the question hasn't been asked, I'm surprised, how much money, uh, E and D was used to help soften the law to the tax pay? And that number, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Rooney, was seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars?
That's correct, um, we, we mentioned last night that, even though our accounting firm suggested that we use five-hundred thousand dollars, um, I made the decision to propose to the school committee that we use seven-fifty. Um, when I was hired, there was some criticism of the district in terms of how much E and D was every single year, and the logical question of, why did you ask us for so much when you ended up returning so much? Uh, I'm very proud of the fact that, uh, we've tried to, um, be as prudent in our budgeting as possible so that we would not have significant E and D, but, um, you know, our, our submission for E and D was approximately one-point-one million, um, we're getting a sense from, uh, the auditors and such that it'll come, uh, it'll come in probably slightly less than one million. And, um, the school committee chair mentioned, um, on February twenty-seventh, I think he reiterated it last night, that, um, you know, it, it's not optimal to be using as much E and D as what we're currently using.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney, thank you, Mr. Rooney. Uh, I think you get a break for a minute. Uh, we're going, we're going to open up the meeting to this school committee that is here, and I know, Mr. Jefferson, you had your hand up, would you like to go first?
Yeah, I'm gonna come up and speak as a president of individual test, so, here's a couple things, so a little frustration I've had in the process. First, a reminder is, as a regional district, your purview is you guys are supposed to be discussing assessment, uh, line items in the budget, and these same conversations have happened year after year with the town of Red Oak, but then, it's unfortunate that people have been paying attention the last ten years, the tables have turned now. We hope that, you know, they've recovered, and for some reason, Dyton now is, can't pay, and I understand, I'm a taxpayer in Dyton, we're getting caught, but, you know, the school district, last year or the year before, we gave a significant turnback to both member towns, and as we're sitting here talking about, we need a hump just to get by this year, the town should be sitting on a lot of the money that was turned back from E and D last year for the district, so that, I encourage people to consider to get by for the one year. Hopefully, things get better, probably not, because we know how everything's going, but losing kids to BP, Bristol Ag, you know, we're sitting here asking, are regional districts to cut, do you guys go on to Bristol Ag and Bristol Plymouth asking them to cut? No, because you know you're going to have to pay it. And unfortunately, a reminder, we saw the infighting that has happened in the last few years between the two towns, and we are trying to recover, and I don't want to see what happened in years past where we're pitting, pitting the town of Dyton's public services against the town of Dyton and Red Oak's regional services, because ultimately, the regional districts are set up to protect the education of the kids, so push comes to shove, if Dyton says we don't want to push the regional assessment, they're going to probably likely go through the process we did a few years ago and go through a tech meeting, and we never got to, but ultimately, town of Red Oak would love nothing more than they, Dyton paid for the assessment that they're saying they can't. So, I strongly encourage it, we're three-hundred thousand, four-hundred thousand dollars off. We've been worse in years past with the towns of Red Oak, where there were one-point-four million, and we did, you know, three-three-three, where they cut their town services three million, they came into their E and D three, uh, sorry, three-hundred thousand, we came into some, and then also, um, they, they, even they cut their services. The thing is, we've cut, and as a parent, and as, like, Mr. Rooney said, there's, the more you keep destroying this district, the worse it's going to get for the town. And the town, unfortunately, as I've asked many times, we don't even have a plan how we're going to fund the BP project that we're forced to pay for, so I, I was not happy this year as many people when we opened our tax bills because of years of paying for, you know, different debt exclusions through free cash, but I get the pain, but the thing is, somehow we've got to figure out, how do we invest to recover this district and get the kids back into the district so we ultimately save the town a lot? Every kid that we lose to BP and Bristol Ag significantly hurts the bigger problem, so I would strongly recommend if we can find out how to find free cash that was turned back, close the gap this year, and as someone pointed out last night, unfortunately, none of us can plan for the future because it's so volatile. Every year, we just keep hitting the wall, hoping we can get by next year. It's getting worse and worse, where parents in town are, you know, upset when cuts get made at the schools, and the thing is, you, many of you know, I mean, you get a town meeting where parents get involved because they hearing, you know, these teachers are getting high, it just creates one side versus the other, and we got to figure out how to prevent that this year, because I don't want to get town to get school services, but, you know, I'm here and I'm going to advocate for the school services, so strongly encourage it, you know, whatever can be done to close that gap, you know, we, we try and do it, so.
Sure, thank you, sir. Sure. Thank you, sir. You know, the school committees are, do you have anything that you'd like to ask? All set? Okay, yes.
So, yeah, thank you to the chair. Mr. Hall, I do really hope that your motion to write this letter to the budgeting authorities of the state to increase the student aid, $200 per pupil or kid would be fruitful. Our current enrollment this year, which is what our, the next year's budget's been, or the next year's Chapter 7 is going to be based off of, is 2,549 students. And the minimum state aid we've received is $30 per student, which is a total of $76,000. If, what you said, what you proposed, MMA proposes terms to pass $100 per student, that would be about $255,000. So that would be a great i- impact in, in reducing the deficits that we're working at. As I was sitting and listening, I looked through some emails that come, that I get through from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And they have a section about combo budgeting season. And just looking at headlines, we're looking at Dartmouth is looking at staff cuts, Wayne is cutting $2.5 million. Norton has 23 staff cuts. Tryton Regional is looking at staff cuts. Framingham, they're working on a budget with less data than they expected. Franklin has a $10 million budget tough shift, looking at a 10% increase. Woodman D S N is talking about an override, and the school, uh, school committee is saying, it's not for us. So it's, it's out there, and us and Regional, so they whittled theirs down much like us to a less than 4% increase, but they had to deal with that test. I wanted to come up here and just support Mr. Rooney. We have walked through this entire budget process looking very closely. I'm on the budget subcommittee myself. And every step of the way, hearing what has to be done and what we're looking at, not only this year but the future. I share his reticence to cut further. And also, you know, I understand from the municipal finance side that, you know, you're talking about using E and D next year. We're probably not going to have $250,000 of E and D given to use. And free cash on the town side, like Mr. Jefferson said, we went through that on the Rehoboth side for several years and eventually ended up under two and a half override. Because eventually, that money is no longer going to be there. But when you build budgets with those types of monies that are one time, they have to, you're booked into the budget, they have to be there every year. So it's, it's a rock and a hard place. I told Mr. Rooney earlier in the season, it's not so much a fiscal cliff, it's a fiscal brick wall that we're facing. So we're all in a very difficult situation. And when I say the $450,000 deficit on one town on, on your side, it, it's a regional, it's a regional district. You can't just like say, we're going to cut $450,000 from Dyken's education. There has to be a commensurate reduction, equal reduction on the Rehoboth side. Now, we're well over $1 million cutting, cutting from what our, our budget stands right now, and that's just untenable. So I just wanted to, as the school committee chair, I want to be the superintendent of school committee.
All right, thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you once again for hosting us this evening. Thank you, your certification, the school committee members that are here, and business person as well. Just, I'll be very brief. Thank you to all of you and all of the Dyken residents for your previous support as well as what you're telling us today. And I wish that Mr. Hall was present last evening. Some of you may have been, and you are, it's always difficult to tell these lights. Particularly the parents who are also residents of our town, speaking passionately about exactly what we've been discussing. The fact that we are losing students to other schools because we continue to cut, whether it be the Unified Arts, which for some students are so very important, academics, sports, whatever the case may be. And they were passionate, and they were looking for hope. It was really challenging to sit and listen to one parent after another come up to us in the presence of the committee and say, we need hope. What do you have to offer us? And we, as you, would say the same thing. It's a state issue. It's many districts throughout the state. And my response yesterday to that was, as difficult and as ridiculous only as it sounds, in a way it's a living that it's many districts, because we can write those letters that Mr. Hall was suggesting that we write. And if town and city, and town and city continue to write those letters, then hopefully, at the state, they'll hopefully hear us. So thank you.
Thank you.
I want the school committee and the people to understand that I'm not advocating that the $450,000 shortfall be carried totally by the school department. That is not, what I'm asking for is you join other departments that are going to come under the same rigor as the school department has come under this evening, and ask them to also make cuts and to also share the pain as well. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion for adjournment?
So, okay.
I see Finn, I might recommend the journey, and then the P O S to recommend a three-minute recess.
Mr. Chair.
Before you go into your three-minute recess, somebody file the keys out there. I just want to announce this.
Okay, sure, thank you.